Councilmember LaFredo? Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we have an ordinance authorizing the city of Asbury Park to commence amendement over certain portions of the right-of-way area, airspace adjacent to the property located at 550 Cookman Avenue, block 3105, block 4 formerly known as block 117, block 10.01. The public hearing will be held on September 17th, 2014.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
A public hearing on vacating the Wesley Place right-of-way. Motion to adjourn to the public hearing.
Move it.
Thanks.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Anybody want to be heard on this ordinance?
What is in the ballot?
Vacating the Wesley Place right-of-way. It's a paper street. It doesn't exist. It doesn't exist. Move it close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Move it.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, Fred, can we just do all for him?
No, since it's on for public hearing and second reading, you have to do them separately. If it were first reading, you could combine them.
Motion to adjourn to the public hearing for vacating the Applegate Place right-of-way in Asbury Park. Motion to adjourn to the public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Anybody want to be heard on this paper street? Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Move it.
Second.
Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing on vacating a portion of Lee's Lane right-of-way in Asbury Park. Motion to adjourn to the public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in.
Anybody want to be heard on this paper street? Move to close.
I have a question. Some of the things that you're postponing until your next meeting, the seven -- are you going to make that available so that people can review it and know what you're talking about?
Yes, let me just sort of explain this, um, the Michaels group.
She's asking -- she's asking those who are pushing on the seventeen.
Oh, okay.
No, there are items that you say you want voted on at the next public -- yes.
Correct, the first reading of the five words.
Yeah, so will it be possible for people who are in the audience to see this prior to?
Sure.
I think they'll put it up on the website, okay?
Where are you going to get it?
They are actually advertised and then they are published on the city's website. So, and then the public hearing, the city needs time to get it in the newspaper and there's a specified number of days that needs to be advertised. So that's why we don't reskip a meeting. So you can find these ordinances that will be heard into September 17th on the city's website and it will be out of time.
Or the city hall if you don't have the website.
Yeah, you can go to the chair.
Unless Ms. McRae is talking about the two items dealing with the redevelopment, the Michaels group that had been deferred until September 3rd, council.
Yeah, well, I don't -- yeah.
She won't.
Well, I was thinking mainly of the seventeen, but I could hear something for the third also. It's just that I think when you want people to vote on it, it should be possible so that they can review it if they have to be a part of the audience.
Yeah, we -- everything is published on the city's website, so somebody did have access. And anytime you want to stop at the city hall, the clerk's office, anyone, yes.
Move it close.
Second.
Can we look on the --
No, we did not.
We closed the office.
All in favor?
Move it.
Second. Councilmember LaFredo?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Public hearing on the adoption of an amendment to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan relating to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. Motion to adjourn to the public hearing.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What is that ballot? I thought you postponed that.
Somebody's --
What was postponed this evening was the proposed redevelop agreement between the city and Michaels group with regard to the Springwood Avenue redevelopment project. However, there are certain things that are still on tonight's agenda, including the items that the council has voted on, vacating these paper streets, as well as the ordinance to amend the Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. And this was a topic of quite some discussion at the last council meeting. I know Mr. Sammon addressed it and he's here this evening as well. This was the amendment that was introduced by council. It was sent to the planning board for their own recommendation. The planning board then sent back a report to the council in which they supported two of the three recommended changes, but did not support one of the recommended changes. And in the ordinance, there are reasons for why the council is considering moving forward with this, notwithstanding the fact that the planning board had a concern about one of the three items that are being amended. That is still on tonight's agenda and is going to be considered for council to take a vote on to amend the redevelopment plan.
What is that, the parking one?
This is the one, the three items from the planning board. The first had to do with the vacation of the paper streets and the planning board supported that. The second had to do with the proposed use of the first floor of the structures for residential purposes and residential support services and support offices, and the planning board was in support of that as well. The third item, which the planning board was not in support of, had to do with the proposed addition of a four-story to the structure proposed for Site B and the proposal to reduce the parking requirements for this project as the planning board felt that they were not in conformity with the master plan. However, at the last council meeting, Mr. Sammon provided an opinion that was different from the planning board's and recommended that the council consider moving forward with this, notwithstanding the planning board's concerns, and ultimately the decision rests with the council to amend the redevelopment plan. What's required is that they refer it to the planning board for their review and recommendation, but the council has the final say. If the council disagrees with any recommendation made by the planning board, they have to set forth the reasons on the record, and the reasons are in this proposed ordinance this evening for council to note it.
One question. How many are there serving?
So now, is there more parking or no, it's still the same?
Correct.
Yeah, because they haven't approved.
Well, then, what's it used coming before the board? It hasn't changed. They didn't want it.
Well, the council introduced the ordinance at the last meeting, knowing that the planning board didn't agree with that. Council has the ultimate call.
I know they have the ultimate call, and I know what the plan has said. It's the nicest thing since sliced bread, but that doesn't mean it's a good project for Asbury Park. Parking is very important, especially on weekends or at nights when they have those church meetings. And on Sundays with church, and now there's not going to be any parking? Do you ever go down Springwood on a Sunday? There's no parking.
That's right.
Those churches are full.
They are.
They have to have parking.
Excuse me, which churches are you talking about?
I'm talking about St. Stevens is one.
They have a parking lot.
They have a parking lot, but they overflow onto the street.
Okay, with other churches?
Oh, I don't know the names of them, but they're in an area.
Bates Tavern.
Huh?
Bates Tavern.
Well, I don't know all the names. But I mean, like, how could you bring this back tonight and know there's still not enough parking? It's unheard of.
The action that was taken by the council at the last meeting was to introduce the ordinance and to hold a public hearing this evening.
I know what you're saying.
So it was known at the last meeting that it was going to come back for a public hearing and possible adoption tonight.
It's still the same, so it hasn't changed. I'm hoping that this council is not going to vote for that because they have to have parking. This is a serious problem in this city. I don't think you realize how serious it is because you don't live here. I can't even park in front of my house on Eighth Avenue because of what happened with Deale Towers. They overflow onto the street when you don't have enough parking. You have to have parking. I don't care about a paper street. That's only on the map. And that happened, those three streets were very important to Asbury Park because those people, Appleby and the other two, they were instrumental in raising this town to the level it was at one point. So it's a paper street. I don't know what that means. That means it's not a street anymore?
No.
It never was? Well, whatever. I don't care about that, but I do care about parking. I think that's very important. And I mean, like, you're letting these people come in here. They have no money. They have to get $21 million from the state of New Jersey, for one thing. They have to get money from FEMA. They have to get money from Sandy. They have to get money from HUD. And you're giving them all these kind considerations. It's not right. And first of all, 64 apartments shouldn't even be in Asbury Park. You need home ownership here. You tell the planner to go out and go to other towns and see what they're doing. They're not building apartments, and we don't need those apartments. And I'm very surprised if you go for 64 apartments on Springwood Avenue, you're going to regret it. I know you will. Because I've been here long enough to know what goes on when you knock down a one-family house and build an apartment house. It's not right. You got to think about the future. That is not the future. And as far as what they're going to put on the first floor, that's all bunk because we have 80-something agencies in this town that provide the same services as they're going to provide. They're not doing us no big favor coming here. Go look them up on the computer and see what their buildings look like now. And Jersey City is one of them, and Mr. Kelly should know about that, right? I looked it up. It looks like public housing. That's what that's going to be, a private public housing, and it's wrong. But, that's all I could say.
That's a very good point.
Excuse me, can you go? Hold it, hold it. On the last TV show. You have seven minutes.
I just think Lori Ross, 115 Dewan Avenue, West Side Community Center. I think it's pretty appalling that the council is still going to continue to move forward with this project without making sure that we address parking. Parking is absolutely an issue. We know that there's churches, there's the Springwood Center, there's other development. Why create another parking nightmare? And also, as reported at the planning board with Mr. Henry talking about, based on what Michaels was hoping to get or projecting to get through, whether it's Sandy Eight or wherever, other subsidies, that it was over $300,000 per unit. So, in other words, they're getting the money, but then they're actually going to charge market rate rent with income, median income that Don Sammon says is county-wide, which means that who's actually going to be living in these units? Is it Asbury Park residents? Is it, again, Asbury last? That's what this council is considering, combined with the fact that Councilmember LaFredo knows that the only way to build wealth is through home ownership. And I think, again, it's appalling that this council will continue to move forward on a project that doesn't necessarily benefit Asbury Park residents. If you want to build a project like that, you can go to other towns, but when you try to develop a community, part of the development of the community is access to opportunity, access to opportunity in jobs, access to opportunity with regards to housing. And honestly, quite honestly, you all know that this is not necessarily going to be beneficial to Asbury Park residents. And again, based on what the amendment is, I have no idea why you would let the developers get away with not providing parking. It is a nightmare. As also was reported at the planning board hearing, you had residents in the towns, in this town, in the west side that was robbed by gunpoint in her driveway. So all this assumption that the people that are going to be moving in there won't necessarily have cars and the people that are working there will not necessarily have cars. Here's a newsflash for all of you, especially you, Mayor Campbell. You know that the west side of town is not safe.
It is.
I know that what goes on behind the West Side Community Center on any given night is atrocious. Let me tell you something. To make parking not accessible to the residents that are going to be even renting those units, it's shameful. It would not be allowed in other towns and it shouldn't be allowed in Asbury Park. You have a parking mess. That's why you created a parking authority. And guess what? Whoever votes on it, it's election year, so you have to be held accountable.
Thank you.
[applause]
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Scramble Longburn. I am really surprised that you would consider a project that doesn't have enough parking. Mayor Campbell, I believe you have a handicap spot, I mean, for your car. I mean, you have to stick it for your car. Denise Brown, or Denise talked about how difficult it is to carry groceries all those distant, you know, far distance, the block. She brought up about the churches. She, the credible resident, I can't believe you guys are going to go ahead with it. But the other thing that bothers me is, I put up the fact that we're planning a transit village along the railroad tracks. We need a place that brings in professional jobs. The lot closest to the train station, to Railroad Plaza, corner of Memorial and Lake, that really should be left for commercial business use, not apartments. What you're doing is you're making sure Cookman Avenue does not cross the railroad track. You want the business section to be connected to Springwood Avenue, so when someone goes for a walk, they feel enjoyable walking past stores or businesses to more stores and businesses on a cloudy day or half-rainy day or whatever, when there's not a beach day. By putting the apartments there, you're building tomorrow's slums, as Rita said. There's no denying that because we know what the garden apartments look like on the east side. They're out of control. You really need to reconsider not voting yes on this project. You have the planning board, people that you picked, your friends, who told you it was not a good idea because of the parking issue. I can't believe you're sailing ahead with it. It really looks like you don't want to get reelected. Thank you.
Hi, Pam Lamberton, Sixth Avenue.
Pam Lamberton, Sixth Avenue. In 2002, the city was presented a redevelopment plan. The council considered it. They sent it to the planning board for the planning board's advice. That planning board, led by Ben Schneider, worked day and night for weeks to provide the council with all its expertise, all its thoughtfulness. It gave the council guidance on how to implement and make changes to that redevelopment plan for the benefit of all the city. That city council chose to ignore their own planning board's recommendations. And for 12, going on 14 years, we've been hearing about how that redevelopment plan gave, the city council, through that redevelopment plan, gave away the beachfront. The same thing seems to be happening again. You've got a city council considering a redevelopment plan. You give it to your planning board, people that you appointed, people that you trust, they give you a recommendation, and now you're ignoring those recommendations. And parking is an enormous issue. And if the cutting off that fourth story will reduce the number of parking spaces permitted, then it's a no-brainer. I think you should listen to the planning board recommendations are and not approve this tonight. Thank you.
Move it close.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Can I get this again?
Yes, yes.
I agree with the last two ladies. It seems to me, as long as I'm living in Asbury, money is coming to Asbury, but it's the Asbury resident is kind of like pushed back, pushed out, and take just this. And why, as for the newcomers, and what's going to happen to the original, the original who lived there, you know? Pop and give it issue, you know? And it's not so much for the resident, for the standard, it is for the newcomers, you know? And that shows a very bad market, you know? First of all, it's like, uh, we don't need, you know, where you take what we give you and you accept it and whatnot, you know? Money talks, you know? Politician goes along with whatever that spits the damn with the big bucks, you know? And it's really powerful enough, the residents, you know? The newcomers, old comers, they have them for us. They're putting all the senior over in the senior houses, you know? And they get hurled up like towers, you know? And the owners are paying taxes. They shackle to them and give a grand old draw. You tell them, you take this, not under the regiment tax, you take this, and they move on these rules they set, you know? If you don't, then you're lost, you know? And that's bad. First of all, I would like to ask, how many on the planning board? Who's on the planning board? How many, if you don't plan?
Nine.
Nine? And I think that should be in a review, you know, the planning board, you know? The planning board, the majority don't always have to be right, but it does rule according to the policies of the constitution, you know? And that should be revised. The planning board should be interviewed and have citizens of the department have a meeting with these people around the higher vision, which they are for the highest, to reject, and when they reject it, it's inherited and moved on, you know? Not because the planning board said, well, this is what we go on. And that's one of the things that happens in this country and this city. Big government overrule the little ones. And the little ones make something big, but the big government cares very little about the small. And that's what I said, you know? And popping is a real blessing, you know? When you live in a town that you can't pop, that's bad, you know? You can push aside. So like I say, I think all our council should reconsider going along with this and have meeting with somebody senior who does need something to Asbury, who lives and is concerned, you know?
I wish I could do things on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say, plus the fact, they want a pilot program. I mean, this is unheard of now. It's getting out of control. They won't either have tax exemptions or, I don't know the difference myself between both of them. They're both bad, as far as I could say. But, I mean, how could you even consider it? I mean, I don't understand. I mean, like, Amy, you know what Deer Lake Drive is like?
Well, this is my opportunity to speak. I absolutely don't have a speaking on this issue.
Okay. I just want them to say, and they want a tax exemption too.
Don't let's pause.
We do these things on a poll.
We can pause, public?
That's a poll.
Can you say?
Hold on, favor.
All in. Don't let me say this, sorry.
And faith.
Of course you got to put it on hold.
I cannot.
Yes, as --
I have time, one second. Go on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go.
As you know, the Springwood plan that's currently drafted was a --
You got to get louder.
As you know, the Springwood plan that was adopted was the result of a lengthy public participation process. What we kept hearing again and again, one of the main goals for redevelopment of Springwood Avenue was to provide decent and attractive affordable housing. I think what's being lost here is that the Springwood redevelopment plan certainly supports that goal, strives for us to meet that goal, and that in the redevelopment plan, there is an existing parking requirement of one parking space per affordable unit. When you look at the plan, it can be inferred that that, that the definition of affordability includes what the Council on Affordable Housing determines at debate. Well, we've since learned that there are additional definitions of affordability that come from state agencies, that come from federal agencies. They don't always match those definitions. In the case of Michaels' project, they did. As part of your executive session, discussion, which I can't really go into, but I can't say that, there was discussion about affordable units meeting in a thirty-year timeframe, the affordability requirements under cover. But the financing sought by Michaels uses the definition of affordability that's FID based. To give you an idea of what those numbers are, Asbury Park are Monmouth County's median income, right, which is the benchmark, if you will, that's used to determine affordability in this project and in this finance, is $61,000. When we are drafting the Springwood plan, we also heard a lot, well, housing has to be affordable, but yet it has to be Asbury affordable. Well, what does that mean? What is the definition of what Asbury affordable is? However, I can tell you that Asbury Park's median income is approximately $33,000. The units that would be constructed as part of the Michaels' project range in affordability for folks who have an annual income between $29,000 to $37,000 a year. And obviously, $33,000 for median income falls right smack dab in the middle of that range. This equates to, in this project, monthly rents of between $750 to $1,100 per month. Being that for Springwood Avenue, one of these goals, as I mentioned, is to create affordable units. We knew that there needed to be incentives for this. It's not, whether you're building an affordable unit or another unit, certain costs are insane. The cost of framing, certain structural elements, it's expensive to build. So one incentive was to provide a reduced parking requirement of one parking space per unit. This isn't an outrageous requirement. It's not, Asbury Park wouldn't be the only thing, certainly, that has one parking space per unit requirement. We have to recognize a few things. I want you to know that this is very important. The parking provided overall for the project, and the project consists of three separate development sites, total of five buildings, right, 64 units. The total number of parking spaces provided is 77 parking stalls, and that equates to 61 off-street spaces and 16 on-street spaces, right? When you look at 64 units and 77 spaces being provided, you actually have in excess of 13 spaces. So when you look at the project as a whole and not as three individual projects, it's not unreasonable to believe that people will park and cross the street. However, I recognize there are some concerns with that, especially surrounding security. But we should also be aware that the idea of providing parking off-site, it's not a foreign concept, certainly in the planning world and not in Asbury Park either. Essential Business District, to give you a prime example, we have developments out there where they're providing their parking off-site. The Stein Act parks on the old Malepek Lot on Madison, very close, yet not on the same site. Essential Business District redevelopment plan allows for you to develop a property without any parking. Where is it going to go? It's going to go somewhere off-site. We, also with the one space per unit, we have to recognize that there's a law of averages that's working here. Do I believe that because you live in an affordable unit, you don't own a vehicle? Of course not. That would be extremely naive. But we have to recognize as well that there may be some unit owners that do not have a car. We have to recognize that we are a transit hub with the transportation center and that availability of mass transit will allow people to travel without needing a car, maybe not as exactly when they would want or exactly to the exact destination they would like to, but the availability of alternative means of transportation is there. We know, we all see, that there's had to use of taxi cabs in the city as well. We see plenty of people sign them as well. My point being that just because you own a bicycle doesn't mean that you don't have a car, but people use alternative methods of transportation in the city. Yet some affordable, or some unit owners in general may not have a parking spot or may not need a parking spot. Some may need more than one. When you look at what I said was the law of averages, I think there will be adequate parking provided. Say visitors come. While someone may come to visit overnight, but then it's equally, it's not a harsh stretch to say if someone's visiting one of the unit owners, one of the other unit owners may be out visiting someone else. It's, you don't plan for parking at your highest demand peak. If you do that, you're going to wind up with empty parking spaces, 95% of parking, right? Just another example of that, look at our downtown. Friday, especially Saturdays, jam-packed. Look at our downtown this afternoon, for example. Look at our downtown this afternoon, for example. So, it's my opinion that the one parking space per unit would be adequate for this project, that one parking space per unit is already accepted in the Springwood Plan, as appropriate for affordable housing units. I heard a comment about the fourth floor, I believe it was Ms. Lamerton, excuse me, Pam, was with you, about how it will create more units. Well, in this particular project, the fourth floor doesn't add any additional units, it just, the third and fourth floors are duplex units. Yes, there may be more bedrooms as part of that, but it doesn't add additional units, so just want, that must be fine. You know my recommendation from this go-around, and why I told you all, I feel nice meeting.
So, can I say a couple of things? And you touched on some of them, Mark. So, clearly, I have a different vision for this project, right? And I think it's fine to have a different vision, and it doesn't make you a polite, and it doesn't make you a horrible person, where you say that you don't see any residents, and I quote, benefiting from the services. The whole idea is to employ residents on the first floor and provide much-needed services that people need. You still get one parking spot per unit, and I'm with that, I don't necessarily need an extra bedroom needs another parking spot. You know, what I see is affordable housing on Springwood Ave. And Rita, to your point, I support pilot programs in certain areas, in certain areas I don't, as you know, because I've voted no. In certain areas, I don't have a problem with pilot programs if it's going to spur development. And I think if we make a conscious effort to stay on top of the parking, because there's parking, one parking spot, and then there's on-street parking, and again, obviously, drop the ball with the parking like we did in the downtown, but manage to stay on top of it. The one problem I did have with this, which Pam touched on, was the idea of overruling the planning board, the why we have a planning board, right? And that's still like a little, that's puzzling to me, that we would have a planning board make a recommendation, and we would, and we ultimately can throw out that recommendation. So, that part's a little gray, I'm figuring that out, but I see this differently. I'm not a, you know, I'm not a bad person, I see this project differently. That's it. And if I'm wrong, I mean, I will be here in twenty or thirty years for you to stop me on the street and say, you told yourself.
It's too late, man.
A couple of things. And somebody brought up, you know, transit village, the two thousand and two plan. Two thousand and two, I sat on the planning board, Kevin was mayor, Ed Johnson was the head of UBC. We had improved the plan to build single and two-family homes for homeownership on Springwood Avenue. Wonderful plan, beautiful homes, market rate and affordable housing. We presented it at the West Side Community Center. The public came, and even thought that we were trying to destroy Springwood Avenue. We were told that they didn't want them, they wanted stores, they wanted apartments above the stores, that this plan had to be stopped, and we were like, we didn't understand it at the time, but this is the way everybody reacted. We said, okay. Hence, Springwood Avenue Committee, years later, the Springwood Avenue Committee makes the recommendations, we come with the recommendations, here's what the Springwood Avenue Committee came up with. And now, because of seven spots, we want to stop this, so why don't we wait another seven years before we're able to get something going again? And in seven years, they will be screaming, they don't want that. It becomes incredulous after a while. And as far as the transit village goes, yes, we've been trying to do a transit village for quite a long time. We had hired Rosie and Gail Rice, who became the city manager of Bradley Beach. Did an excellent job on transit, he's studied all up and down the, the whole world. We were stopped on that one, too. Folks, you've got to do something. This is a good plan, this is a reputable company. And for seven spots, when overall what you're going to have is more than enough spots? It don't matter if you have to walk across the street? Yep, that's ridiculous. We're a city, we're not a bedroom community. Thank you.
John, do you want to leave in the comments? John.
Same comments I made with the planning board, the same comments I made two weeks ago, that I think it's a terrible plan, because the parking is two hundred and fifty feet away. People say, well, it's two hundred and fifty feet, it's because of the football field. And so, you're asking for mothers, fathers with young children carrying groceries, two hundred and fifty feet across Springwood Avenue? There's three buildings, there's no problems with building A and C whatsoever, it's building B, the largest building, with thirty-two units. Don's right, the fourth floor did not increase units, increased two-bedroom units into three-bedroom units, which I believe is, the fourth floor has six units. It just makes no sense to me, and John, I think it's a lot more than seven spots, because what they're proposing, they also want to put handicap on the first floor, on the rear or the south side of the building. So, right now, the spots are undersized, as we talked about before, it's exactly, they're proposing undersized spots to begin with. Now, they're handicap spots, they're going to be twice as small, so the number's going to be reduced even more. I have no problem with the project, I think the project's great, it's just like, hey, guys, come off a nickel and buy some money from the Housing Authority or something, and you know, come off some of your own money and provide the parking. And I would vote yes on it tomorrow, but no parking, I just think, again, we screwed up the parking on the east side, that's not screwed up, one of us.
Okay, John, should we think about the parking spaces? I'm running out, we're out of meeting with them. The spaces are bigger than the spaces in the city parking lot.
Well, they're proposing that, but they do not meet code. They do not meet code, as Don Saddle will tell you, because of the CIS recommends, or whatever CIS is, the charter gave us the last time, recommends nineteen feet, or eighteen point five, which we talked about earlier, and they're not handicap spots. And the first floor, rear, they're talking about handicap. It does not provide any parking for the people who are going to be working in the front buildings. It does not provide any parking for the people who are going to be coming to the front buildings. As I think Denise Richardson said, hey, look, guys, you know, you're also looking about like doing snow fun. And we are. I hope somebody tells the engineer to look into it. But, so, when we tell everybody on Springwood Avenue, okay, you can't park on the north side, when there's snow, and there's no parking on the south side, where do they park? So, now, where do these people live? They're providing on-street parking, there's no longer on-street parking facilities, no sort, where do they park?
Guys, I lived here, it was Springwood Avenue, I had all apartments and all stores, and so did you, and so did Rita. We had to make something. You had a store over there, didn't you? Didn't your family have one? Okay, but, folks, we're going to repark. We're offering even on the spot, now we're out, we've got a lot of parking for everybody. There are hundreds of apartments down there.
So, we feel like, you know, we find a spot, you find a spot.
But that puts wrong with this town, that's why we hired a parking, so we screwed up all. And then, if you go, you have to be the parking in this town. Except that's why it raises people, that's why it raises open, that's why it's a market.
Okay, you know, I have to add a few words. I want to say one thing about the parking. I am not necessarily in favor of narrowing the parking spaces. Wasn't before, I'm not now. And just recently, in Manus One, there was a Superior Court judge that received a ticket because the parking spaces were a little bit more narrow, and her car went over into another parking space. She said, from this point on, I'm going to look at a police officer when I get one of these tickets. And when she got the ticket, the reason why she was parked a little bit in the other lane was because a car next to her was. And so, that I do have a problem with. I also have a problem with really telling people what type of cars you have to buy that will fit into the space. Having said all that, there seem to be a number of people that have crystal balls, and they're saying what will be ten, twenty, thirty years from now, and will, what won't be. And I certainly don't have a crystal ball, and I don't think any people, anyone else here has a crystal ball in mind. Having said that, I am in favor of this development. Change is difficult for almost everyone, and this is what this is, change. Do I have some concerns about this project? I certainly do. I have some of the same concerns that some of the other people have. Who's going to live here? Who's going to live in those units? So, I have the same concerns. We had talked about this with the Michaels group, back and forth, back and forth, and at this point, I'm in favor of moving ahead with the project.
Say one.
Say, move.
Second. Do you want to move, Freydo?
Yes.
Now, the number four.
Yeah.
Now, the number one? Yes. There, Kim? Yes. Is that all higher? Have a good night, everyone. No, no.